Good evening. Now, of course, the Catholic Church. Good evening. I'm Kathy Stoltz with the League of Women Voters. Let's see the weather before each other. It's kind of strange tonight. First off, I want to acknowledge the candidates who are here and all of you that are giving up the evening to come and find out more about the candidates before you vote for Board of Education. Our purpose here tonight is just to introduce you to the candidates. There are eight people running for three seats on the board. I have to read this because it's complicated. In order to assure that all the people on Board of Education are not from the same neighborhood, they are elected from districts A, B, and C, and no more than two members of the board can be from the same district. There are five seats on the board, three of which are at this time. So, there's a little chart up here that tells you the possible combinations that can be elected this time. Because the two members that are currently on the board are not up for reelection, one is from District A and one is from B. So, you can vote for whoever you want to, and your votes will all count for the candidate. But the combinations that are possible to be seated on the board are on that sign over here. Is that clear as much? That said, you will notice there are not eight candidates up here, several of them are unable to make it. Mr. Asbury likes to know that he was out of town. Debbie Hendershot until was at the hospital with her children. Mr. Foggan did not accept our invitation. And Peggy Smith is homesick. So, we have the hail and healthy ones here with us tonight. To start, we're going to give each candidate a minute to introduce themselves to you, and then we'll start asking them questions. If you have a question, there are people who can bring you a card and pencil if you didn't pick one up when you came in. You need to make sure your questions apply to all the candidates, are not directed at just one person, nothing personal kind of stuff in there. Sometimes we give two or three that are on the same topic, and so we, these two ladies over here review them and kind of merge them into one question, so you may not hear the exact words you wrote down somewhere. We're going to give them a minute each to answer the questions, and then we hope we're going to finish with this about 7:45, 7:15 at the latest, and then there will still be a half hour before they issue us out of the building. And we would encourage those of you with questions for individual candidates to catch up with them in the lobby afterwards. I'm going through talking. Here's your seat. These two ladies are going to review your questions. Two ladies in the front row are going to keep track of time. They will hold up a card when there's 15 seconds left, and a big red card or a stop sign when time is up. We will not cut you off in mid-sentence, but we, you know, hope you'll wind up your thought when that sign goes up. We just want to hopefully get to know the candidates. It's the only reason we're here. Candidates, I will warn you, at some point I almost always lose my place, so if I call them the wrong person or I miss their name, don't feel shy about correcting me. One last announcement, or one or several I will be making. This coming Sunday, our League of Voters guy will be in the Sunday paper, so you can watch for that. You can buy a Sunday paper if you don't subscribe. You can look online at LWD, WV.org. That's League of Women Voters, West Virginia.org, LWDW. And it will be posted there. And that questionnaire has gone out to all the candidates that will be on the ballot without you having listened to me any further. We'll start with Judy Johnson to introduce herself.
Good evening. What I would like you to know about me tonight is that I have a working knowledge, not possibly held by all the other candidates. I will not have to sit back and learn as I go on Board of Education, but I can begin the job running. As a teacher, I've taught in the classroom, library, physical education, computer lab, and alternative school. I've collaborated on strategic plans, written policies, developed school calendars, conducted professional development, created budgets, and have written and received grants for students of Wood County. Since retiring, I've served as a consultant for the West Virginia OEP, whose duty was to review the school systems in the state. I've visited over 30 schools in 10 counties. I have served as a foster parent here for 10 years and was fortunate to be able to adopt our last two foster children. I have a granddaughter currently attending a middle school in Wood County, and I feel I have the background for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know you will appreciate them, but I'm going to ask you not to applaud because it just wastes time when you could figure anything. The next speaker would be Justin Raiver.
Thank you. I am Justin Raiver. I am a lifelong resident of Wood County and a proud graduate of our Wood County Public Education. I want you to take a moment to imagine what is possible, because education is the foundation upon which we build our future. We are investing, and I want you to invest in yourselves, so that way we can build an education system that continues to educate every child, every family within our community. When we look at how we need to expand our community and what services are needed, we need to look at what can our education system provide, because that's what businesses are looking for. That's how we bring development to our area, and that's how we ensure our future is bright. So, if, when you are supporting and looking at a candidate, all I ask is, at this point in time, you look at how we can build our future and put together to make it prosperous and continue our common goal, which is to put all kids first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell.
Good evening, CD. My name is Walter Bunnell. I came here to Wood County, Boston, 51 years ago, to go to college where I met my wife. We got married, had six children, and now we have about 40 grandchildren, and a very large family to spread throughout the county. But they are beautiful children. We love the education system here. We know that they have problems, and we always work with the education system everywhere possible. We'll continue to do so, and we'll always do the best to see that the children will have a good possibility of getting the best education. This is extremely important to us and our family, because we're a very close knit family.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
Thank you. You gotta hold it.
Gotta hold it.
Thank you.
The whole time? Oh, wow. Okay.
First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring me again. It gives us an opportunity as candidates to be able to share some of our thoughts, so I wanted to thank you for that. My name is Rick Alcott. I am a former, three-time Wood County Board of Education and Republican president, and I also was a former president of the West Virginia School Board Association, and I've worked with all three branches of government, implemented some major projects in Wood County, and some of the things I've been involved with also with the West Virginia University Extension, WVU P Foundation. That's given me some great exposure, but probably the most important one is I've been a substitute teacher the last two years. And when you start living, what people are living in the school system, it gives you a wonderful perspective. And I care enough about the kids in the community to put my knee back in the hat, because there's a tremendous amount of work that needs done in Wood County schools. A lot of stability, a lot of focus on academics, and a lot of project management. So, I look forward to talking with any of you in the future, and appreciate you coming out here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a young man here for Miss Hendershot. We wanted to say a few words, and she was unable to get here.
Do you know which microphone? Just pick one or come here. Pick one. Just look. A little bit down. She's right there. Hi, my name is Michael Hess, and I'm in place for Debbie right now. Both her children are in the hospital, and she has a work-related activity in Virginia which she has to get to tonight. Debbie's experience is 11 years as a coach, many years of volunteer work with the Boy Scouts of America, the Mayor's Parks Committee, and the Mayor's Youth Committee, and this has allowed her to work with educators, parents, and students from all walks of life. Debbie is a candidate that's wanting to work to end the tax burden, to be physically responsible and accountable with the people's mind. She also wants to work with educators, students, and parents to make sure every student and teacher has all the needs and resources available for them to use, so every child can get the best education, not just a one-size-fits-all approach. That's 15 seconds, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for letting me do this.
Questions? We will start with Mr. Raiver. What would your one, two, three guiding principles be in making decisions as a board member?
Number one is, what is best for the students? And what I mean by that is simply, when we put kids first, we are ensuring that teachers have the resources that they need, that our facilities are being kept up, and we're using resources as a valuable product, which they are. The second would be, are we doing so financially, are we doing so with a physically responsible mindset? We only have a number of funds that we can use, and our funds are reducing each and every year, so we have to make sure that those are stretching. And the third is, of course, what we have to look as board members is, what's legal and what's not? Coming from a legal background, that's a huge question that we have to look at, is what are we doing, and are we doing so legally?
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell. Anytime you want me to repeat the question, I'll do it then. What would your one, two, three guiding principles be in making decisions as a board member?
One, first of all, we need to do something to get the children to open their eyes, understand we're doing, we as teachers, we're doing what we have to do by sending them down to classrooms and showing them what they need out in the fields today for work. A lot of children today get lazy on us, don't want to attend class, but there are some children who are extremely want good, and they do very good in class. The ones that are slow, we have to give them extra attention and see that they get. Secondly, we have to also follow up and make sure that the teachers have the funds and their sources to take care of this. We as board members have to be there and follow up to see that everybody is getting what they have to have.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
Would you repeat it, please?
What would your one, two, three guiding principles be in making decisions as a board member?
I think first and foremost, the primary justice in the school system are students and their families, so that's got to be the primary focus of it, and what way does it reach their learning environment? That's a key piece. The second piece, I think, is critically important, is doing it in a physically responsible way. We do have both local and state and federal bodies, and so we've got to have a pretty good understanding of affordability of those types of things and make sure that we keep that in front of us. And I think the third thing that comes to mind, I think, is that in what way is our staff and their resources positioned to execute whatever we do and direct as a school board across the system? With those three things in place, I think you keep your principles in front of you and you don't lose sight of what our mission is, and that's to develop people for responsible adulthood.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
First, I would consider, is it best for children? Then I would collaborate and listen to what the community, the school staff, and parents want and feel about the issues. As Mr. Raiver said, we need to look at legality. But if I go back to number one, and those other factors are against the issue, I look again, is it best for children? And then I think we can modify and fix it so that we can find a way to do it. I never took note for things I want to do at our school. I and my colleagues always found grants, whatever funding we could from whoever we could, to support our school system, and I would continue to do that.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Bunnell. Do you support moving to e-textbooks? How would you ensure that all students have devices and Internet access?
Well, as far as Internet access, I'm not crazy on the Internet access. It's good for them. I need to know it, okay? But to make sure that they have, it would need to be blocked in certain stances, okay? With this here, our students would have to be kept in line as to what they were working with and everything like this here, and doing this here. If they could do that, they would have something that would really turn them down alive, because Internet is something that's becoming big in the world, and throughout whatever educational system you're in, it's going to help you wherever you go. So, now, I'd like to see it, but it needs to have the safety issues.
Thank you. Ms. Alcott.
With regard to the textbooks, I think it's an essential part of any curriculum advancement we have. Listening to the new math curriculum, I heard that it's a critical element in textbook selection process. There was also an electronic version of that accessible to students. But we have a pretty big challenge with Wood County schools, where we've got some outdated mobile labs and teachers' desktop computers that are grossly outdated. We've got a lot of work we've done, computer labs across the system, to get ourselves to the point where we can utilize e-textbook. If you don't have the technology, you don't have the network infrastructure to do that, it can become quite an obstacle. So, I think it's the wisest thing to do. Yeah, if I could dream, it would be wonderful, as I've heard other school systems, they would have all students with a laptop. But we've got to deal with what we're dealing with first, which is getting our infrastructure and our technology in schools to that point. But it's fully supported.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Could you read the question?
Do you support moving to e-textbooks? How would you ensure that all students have devices and Internet access?
I was fortunate to be able to visit counties where students are given a tablet when they enter third grade. When they enter high school, they were given a laptop, and every year it's a new laptop. It wasn't any reconditioned or old. Those students were allowed to take those technology home and use them. The textbooks can be loaded on the computer without using them on the Internet. It can be loaded, downloaded onto the tablet of the computer, and they can access the information through that. If there is an Internet problem that we have to face, then we have to work with other things, government, the city government, state government, whatever, to get funding to be able to give those children access. And I'd rather see our children carrying home a laptop than 10 or 15 pounds of those every night.
Thank you. Mr. Raiver.
When looking at whether or not e-textbooks are the way for the future, the fact is, yes, they are, and it's something that we have to invest in, that we have to hold ourselves accountable when we're looking at what resources that we're going to use to educate our students. E-textbooks are just one mode of, it's one mode of different ways to instruct our students. So, one of the things that we have to look at when looking to make a switch to e-textbooks is, how do we hold ourselves physically responsible? Because we have 12,500 students in our system, thereabouts, and how do we provide every one of those students with the resources that they need when everyone's home life and their personal abilities are different? So, it's individualized, and it's actually looking at what is best for the individual students.
Thank you. Before I begin to do this, if there's anybody here who has not registered to vote or needs to update their registration, we happen to have somebody here who can take care of that for you. Mark Rogers is sitting up at the front door here in a blue shirt, and I know he wrote a voter registration forms with him, and he would be happy to meet with you afterwards and get that taken care of. The next question, we will start with Mr. Alcott. Do you support moving? We did that one. How do you perceive teacher morale to be at present, and what would you do to improve it?
This is an interesting one, because my wife's a teacher, and I interact with her quite a bit during the day as a substitute. I believe our system needs a lot of improvement in that arena. I think that's why the upcoming superintendent selection is so critical, that you get the right person who can lead our school system in the right way to establish trust, and the people respect that individual for the way that they behave, and do the planned interactions with the teaching community, not just teachers, but the total staff in general. But it requires a lot of labor, but it's really principal behavior that's observed by other people. If you want to prove morale, they know that they have the proper development and support behind them and what they're trying to do in the mission for our students. And that's a big challenge, even go from school to school, and you see it. I've seen it over my tenure in the Board of Education across the state, that people tend to go further than the leadership figures will take them. And so, it's critical that you act in leadership in all the schools, but also in our central office and staff.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
I want to say I agree with Mr. Alcott. I think it's very important we need to have key people in leadership positions that respect our staff and that are respected by our staff. Our staff, they've shown us the fortitude that they have this year, that they came unified with the other teachers and staff, and I think that was a morale booster. We have to continue that. They want to work for your children, our children, and we want to help them do that. But we need to give them the leaders that can help them toward that goal.
Thank you. Mr. Raiver.
There's no doubt that there's questions about the teacher and overall morale in our public school system here in Wood County, and it's something that we have to look at and be very cognizant of as we move forward. And it starts at the top. The way I approach this is, there's never a time when I ask someone to do something. I'm never going to ask them to do something that I wouldn't do myself. And if that means scrubbing the floors, I'm right there with you. And it's something that we have to decide whether or not we want to be welcoming, and do we want to work together as a team? Because teamwork is what is needed to ensure that every child meets their fullest potential. And as we look at moving forward, we have to ensure that the leadership's in place, as well as making sure that the teachers, principals, and our leaders have the resources they need to build the teams to do what is right for every child.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell.
Thank you, Mr. Raiver. I couldn't agree with you more. This here is something that we have to stop and look at from all angles. Our teachers, sure, they're okay, and I will say one thing about Wood County teachers, they've always had a fairly good morale. I've brought six children up through this system. Now, I've taken them to different schools, I've bounced around the county, I live in different areas, and I've seen attitudes in the teachers change. Some school systems had super attitudes, others, I could have done without. But most of our schools, our teachers here in the school system of Wood County, it's fairly decent attitudes. We have this sympathy, get out there and get another background in here, have ourselves an income back in the society so that we can afford to pay them what they need.
Thank you. We're back to Ms. Johnson. Do you support consolidation of schools? Why or why not?
I think it depends on which schools you are talking about. I think we need to look at the research, we need to look at the needs of each school. Each school is so different in our county building, as far as the building, the school population, and I think it's a community, and a community decision, and a community whereby the teachers, parents, the staff, and I think we need to come together to make some hard decisions in the next few years as our enrollment is declining. So, we need to look at that together and come to decisions together. And I would rule it out, but I don't think we look at it lightly either.
Thank you. Mr. Raiver.
Thank you. The fact is, this is something that we are going to have to deal with as a community sooner rather than later. We have aging school facilities that don't meet the 21st century classroom. I look at schools in our county that are not fit for students, that, you know, those with disabilities cannot fit around the school. And those are considerations that we have to look at as our student population's declining, our resources, as well as how do we best ensure that our facilities are up to par to provide a 21st century education for all of our students? And that's a huge issue. So, as Ms. Johnson provided, there's a lot of discussion that we're going to have to have as a community, because it's going to take us all working together for this goal to ensure that every student is in a facility and one that is going to provide the resources that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell.
Well, we do have a lot of schools that are in bad condition, okay? Small schools that are in bad condition, and they do need to be protected. However, we do not want to overload our teachers with a bunch of students to where they are not going to be able to give those students proper attention. We want these students to get good attention. As my older son went to college, I asked him where he was going to go. He was going to study to be an engineer. He said he was going to go to West Virginia Tech. I said, "Why did you select West Virginia Tech?" He said, "Well, Dad is a small school, and he says, 'I'll get a lot more personal attention there.'" He went there, and as he finished up there, he was an honor student with several very high grades. So, I would say that's important for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
This is a focus area of mine. I think it's essential that we have to approach school consolidation. 10 of the 19 elementaries in Wood County are below the economies of scale guidelines for the Comprehensive Education Facilities Plan. The school system is 2,000 students, smaller than when I first went on board in 2004. Last CEFP that I was a part of creating was another board and superintendent. Worthington was just closed five years ago. But there are 10 that are below those guidelines, and what's happening now is placing a huge amount of stress on our sub-organization of resources. We're cutting staff at the middle school and the high school levels, and we're going to reach a point where we're cutting off essential programs and resources in the wrong place. So, I don't think it's whether it's supported, and I think it's essential for the future financial health of Wood County schools.
Thank you. Mr. Raiver, we're going to give you this one first. Where do you think the educational curriculum decisions should be made? Locally, state, or federal? Please explain.
For me, this is a very interesting topic, and I need to take it into two trains of thought for a moment. First, we have our West Virginia Board of Education that sets the standards. They're the body that sets the goals that they want all of our students to meet by a certain grade level. And there's been a lot of controversy over the past couple of years over some different standards. But what we need to look at is, once those standards are met, because we all can agree, we want the highest standards for our kids. We want the best for them. But when we look at how we implement them, how we actually have the curriculum going in and the decisions being made, that is at a local level. That is how our teachers approach it, that's how our schools approach it. That is how our teachers approach it, that's how our schools approach it. And that's the policies that our county puts forth to ensure that our students are meeting the highest standards that we can put forth. But at the end of the day, it happens locally within our classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Bynell.
Well, I feel that this is something that is more local than it is federal, okay? The state of West Virginia has the knowledge, it's what they have to bridge their minds. They know what they need to do to get more fines. And they will do it, they have to. I know West Virginia will back up their children one hundred percent. And parents will back up their children. And we will back up the teachers as well. We've got to try and keep it to where we are going to benefit them. And we're not going to have them going out there and picking up stuff from a federal level that is not going to benefit them here. We want them to get it locally as much as possible and go from there and go on.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
There's no one better to know how to deliver curriculum than your local school system. Every, every county in West Virginia has different demographic challenges and different cross-section of the student population. And just like with the, the recent math curriculum that was structured, a team of people locally, we're heavily part of that. And making that happen and finding out what the right resources were and the right delivery process was for. A combination of textbook and, and e-delivery, I think so it's really critical. I think sometimes we are controlled too much from the state and federal level. I think it's best controlled at the local level. Because that's where your competent professionals are, that know how best to deliver to the students that they're exposed to every day. Uh, and, and that's something we can never lose sight of. And I think local management of that curriculum in line with, with some educational principles is critical and it's best out there.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
The federal government sets the expectations because they have to see there's equality in our educational system no matter what state we live in. The state sets our standards, but the local implementation is where we get to our students. Teachers know the methods to reach their students and it's so important, we give them the materials, the technology, the support they need to be able to do this because students don't come to school all on the same level. We have so many variable levels. We have students with unique qualities that we have to meet their standards. And teachers have to do it all. We have to find a way to support them the best way that we can to reach their, and do their job.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take one more second for one of my public service announcements. Early voting starts on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at the Judge Black Annex over here. Uh, it starts at those community sites, the Rubik Card Department, Mineral Wells Fire Department, Vienna City Building and Wavestown City Building on Tuesday, the first of May, and runs through that Saturday, May the fifth. Uh, if you ready to vote early, then wait for Election Day, those are your opportunities. Uh, out on the table near the door, there is a schedule with all these dates on it. If you want to take the reminder home and stick it out in your refrigerator. Uh, let's see. Mr. Bynell, you'll be first for the next question. Do you believe in merit pay for teachers? Please elaborate.
I believe that the teachers should have a better income, okay? I believe that they deserve a much better income. However, to do this here is almost ridiculous under the current standards. We have to find a way to do it. And we can, we can do it. We can help bring up the income for these teachers and help them to get better standards to teach with. What we have to do is bring in something that would bring income into our state. And that there is going to be more businesses. More businesses comes in, more taxes our state will get, more taxes our state will get, the more we'll have to give to our children.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
In general, I think I, I support anything that rewards people for performance. Um, the challenge is, uh, in, in our systems, in the educational arena is how best to do that. I came from the private sector and you had a very different performance model and how people were evaluated and what the measuring sticks were for that evaluation. Uh, I think that anything we can do to improve our, our teaching community, their, their salary and benefit package is a positive thing. Because having been in many other countries, it's a national problem for us that our people are, are not held in high enough esteem. Because there's nothing that impacts our culture more than educators that are transforming the minds and the lives of people. But in general, I, I, I do support that move, uh, for merit pay. But we have to be very careful how you construct that and what way you, you define what, what is merit? How, how is it calculated and how is it defined in, in my head?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Uh, this is a difficult question and it sounds easy to give merit pay to the best performing schools. But coming from a school that was not one of the lowest performing schools in the county because of the drug use, because of the economic uh, situation of the families. I wanted to teach there and I stayed teaching there because I felt I made a difference. We took those children when they came and took them from where they were and we took them as far as we could that year. Every school is not the same, every year is not the same, every class is not the same. That's a difficult situation. If the state is trying to do that somewhat by looking at the growth model, where they see where the children are and how much you grow by the end of the year. But again, is the test reliable? It's not there yet, we are not there yet to be able to do this.
Thank you. Mr. River.
I need to echo what Ms. Johnson and Mr. Alcott stated. Yes, this is something that, um, is possible, but the question is how do we implement it? We want to ensure that we are attracting the best teachers, the best staff members that we can throughout our entire system. And in doing so, we have to ensure that we are competitive, especially with Washington County and its school districts that are right across the river. As well as other counties within the state. So it's something that we, we need to look at, we need to dive into. And we need to believe that we can have a positive outcome that is investing in our students, investing in ourselves as an education system. Because we have to do it now. We don't have a choice of whether or not we're going to look at something. We have to start acting and the worst thing I hate to hear is, oh, we can't, or, oh, we tried to do it, or we did it once. Those aren't valid reasons for me. We need to act now and actually put some, some work into it.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott will be first on this question. How would you address the technology needs of our schools?
Well, first and foremost, you've got to have a baseline of where we are. Just from my exposure, being in the classroom the last couple of school years, you have to assess the network infrastructure. You've got to assess what desktop computing teachers are working with, what are vocal labs? Um, are the condition of them, the age of them, as well as our major computer labs itself. But you've got to assess, you've got to know where you are. And I think the MIS director has, has to be a key person in, in putting that together. You've got to assess how big a gap do we have? And then understanding what, what sort of technologies out there. Network infrastructures is the one that would provide the most robust educational environment for the students. And then you start putting that part of, and that should be also part of a comprehensive educational facilities plan. Is how do you get yourself to a different place from the technology standpoint? You've got, you've got to assess where you are first and then where you need to be.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Um, I think we need to look at utilizing the funding in the most efficient way as possible. We need to review that to see that is being done. I agree with the CEFP. Also, we need to make sure our buildings are up to date, that can utilize the technology that is available today. Because the problem is, technology's changing all the time. Uh, someone mentioned a while ago, and I talked about tablets too, about tablets being, uh, expensive. Tablets are cheaper than most textbooks. So if the student takes the tablet home, he's expected to bring it back just like the book the next day. When we, is there a need for computer labs when every child has a device? We have to look at all of these things again. We need to talk to businesses, they need to come in and help us plan. What is the most efficient way to get our money to use for our future?
Thank you. Mr. River.
Thank you. The technology needs of Wood County schools, I believe, is truly unimaginable at this point. Every single school has different levels of what they have and what their needs are. And we need to ensure that we have an equitable answer, that every child's receiving the same resources and the same level of technology. Because technology changes every day. What works today won't work tomorrow or yesterday. So we need to look at what are our actual needs and what is physically available for us in what we have to do. We have to look at our actual infrastructure and see what investment we need to make there. And a lot of what we're talking about tonight is investment. And we are at a crossroads where we need to ensure that we are investing in the right areas. And to have the tough discussions that are needed. And we can't rely on what's been done and what has or hasn't been working. And actually come to the table and rethink the process.
Thank you. Mr. Bynell.
I feel technology is something that we must look into. We've got to get everybody, every school, everywhere on the same level. Once they're on the same level, then we can start moving ahead. But we have to move in cautiously. We've got to select a good program, a program that's going to give us the most value and last as long as, and we'll have to work with them. Many of our coaches and everything, see that they'll be able to work with us and help us keep these programs going. But it is something to look at very strongly. I've seen schools in Wood County that have had excellent technology systems. And I've also seen schools that are very poor and that is in the same year. These schools have been passed, they're in the past. They were back when my kids were growing up and hopefully now they've been corrected. But we're going to watch for this year down the river.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson, we'll start with you this time. Do you think sports are overemphasized at the expense of academic programs? Please comment.
This is a hard one. Uh, I think we need well-rounded students and students have different, what we call multiple intelligences. They see in different areas. A child may see academically, another child may succeed and stay in school because of sports. I feel that, uh, sports too has a lot to teach our students to teamwork. And, uh, utilizing what they have in hard work, just hard work, showing up every day. Uh, I think that we can look at both areas and we can find common ground where we know we want a well-rounded student to come out of our schools. And also, we wouldn't want to leave out music, not only in sports, but we have students that have, uh, their gifts maybe in music. So we have to provide well-rounded educational activities for all students.
Thank you. I'm taking a blank. Mr. River.
Well, I think the best answer I can give you is it depends who you ask. Um, from my, I'll, I'll give a little personal story. I was not a sports person growing up. Growing up through high school, when I graduated, I spent three years actually in Mrs. Alcott's classroom. Um, and it was on our speech and debate team. And that's where I was able to excel. And just as Judy was providing for us, we have to ensure that we're providing resources and opportunities for every student for that well-rounded education. It is our arts, our music, our academic teams, our sports teams. Because every one of these different opportunities changes lives. And it ensures that we are providing our students with everything that they need to be successful graduates and members of our community. From the day that they enter our schools till when they're done.
Thank you. Mr. Bynell.
Okay, this is something that, uh, I've had a lot of background in. Sports is something I've always been very strong in from day one. But I've also had a lot to do with music. I played sports since I was a young boy. I coached baseball at Goddoby Field for twenty-some years. And I've also taught music, taught, I taught it for seven years. I took guitar lessons for seven years, trumpet lessons for four years, drum lessons for four years, saxophone. And I've taught other children, my grandchildren as well. And I tell you, all children can learn. They can all learn from everything. We've got to give them the opportunity. Whether it's art, whether it's music, whether it's sports, give them the opportunity. But don't over emphasize to where you put too much on.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
Uh, Mr. River's right, it depends on who you ask. Um, I, I probably got a decent perspective on the S I that, just in the fact that I was a state champion baseball player at Park River South. But I also was a lead trump leader in the band too, so was able to do some extracurricular stuff that helped me. But I always viewed athletics as an extension of the educational environment. Where we get ourselves in troubles when we forget that it's education first and athletics and, and any other extracurricular second. Um, we didn't become Title Town USA route route for, for that reason. I mean, it was, uh, it is very important in this community, you've seen a lot of information around the athletic facilities focus. But that all has to be mashed in with academics first and athletics of others second. Uh, but I think that there's a blend, as long as we don't lose focus, that our coaches don't lose focus that it's education first and athletics second, you keep yourself out of trouble. And, and those that do it well are the ones that are successful, both at high school and college level.
Thank you. Um, Mr. River, we'll start with you. The school board has federal support for nationally board certified teachers in recent years. How do you view the NBCI designation and would you, would you support more teachers gaining it?
That is a resounding yes for me. When any educator wants to better themselves, wants to ensure that they are staying on top of their field, that wants to become a nationally board certified teacher, we need to stand behind them and not in front of them to ensure that they can achieve this great prestigious accomplishment. It's no small feat when a teacher, when one of our educators wants to take this on. And we should be supporting them, providing them with the funding and the resources to go through this process. As well as the support on this side of it as they're applying for it, as well as once they become a nationally board certified teacher. So that way they can continue to educate their students, but also be the leaders within their schools to provide those resources to their fellow educators.
Thank you. Uh, I think I said NBCI and it's NBCT for teachers. Uh, Mr. Bynell.
Well, in a roundabout way, I feel I've already answered this question. I feel I'm very competent and I feel that you should always do your best to get ahead and that's teachers as well. Everybody should do their best to get ahead and anyone that's not there to support them, then they're very poor friends, very poor friends. You need to be there to support your fellow man at all times. Your teachers, your students, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Alcott.
I've been a part of, of multiple boards in my, my prior tenure that we thought very strongly about national. about national board certification. In fact, we endorsed a pretty healthy supplement from the local level for national board certification. But it's not just the certification itself, it is a tremendous amount of work that teachers do to obtain certification. But as Mr. Rager indicated, it's what do they do with that certification? Do they become an academic or departmental leader with the certification itself? It does raise their expectations of themselves and hopefully of other people around them. But you're really looking for educational leadership, and that's where that certification comes in, a really important part of any school. So yeah, I encourage that we have, we put our money where our mouth is as prior boards to make sure that we encourage that at the local county level, that people who choose to follow that certification do so.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
I think when business comes into our area, that one of the first things they look at is what kind of educational system do we have? And I think we can always raise our head and be very proud that we have more NBCT teachers in Wood County than any other part of the state. And it's been noticed by businesses that have been looking at Wood County. We have a couple of NBC teachers in the audience, and I know through them and through the work I have seen others put in, it's a self-reflection process where they're always looking, what can I do better? How do the students react with this? It's a very good process, and it's a reflective process to make teachers better and to consider other factors than how the day goes by, but looking at what are the students doing and what can they do? So it's, I fully support and agree with, I'm so glad that they put in this incentive to teachers to look beyond just the regular certification process.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell, let's start with this one. What are your feelings about the recent teacher work stoppage?
Well, I was touching on it. However, our recent teacher work stoppage, I feel that our teachers did need to get some attention. They've been trying to get a message across. And whatever you have to do, get the attention and get the message across. They did the right thing, in my opinion. They got the attention of the people, they got the message across to them, they didn't waste time, they got back, got back to school, and got our children back in education and did not lose any ground. The thing was, they did get our message across in a very strong manner.
Thank you. Mr. Elkhart.
Could you ask the question again, I want to make sure I answer it correctly?
What are your feelings about the recent teacher work stoppage?
Sad and disappointing that it came to that. I knew when it was frustrating, I was hearing things, and it really began with the healthcare approach with household income piece, where did it all begin? And then it grew into the wage and benefit piece. It's unfortunate that we had to cancel school for nine days. Ultimately, the students suffer. But I also know that our teaching community understand what they bring nationally and the benefit packages is that, as I mentioned before, in relation to the salary, I used to make it to five, and I'm not as educated as my wife. It was a tragedy to see what our education professionals are paying versus private industry. So as a county and a state, anything we can do to encourage, attract and retain education professionals into the system, I think it's critically important. So I was glad to see it resolved. I think the legislature could have handled it a little differently, so it would have resolved much more efficiently. But kudos to the educational community for following through and getting their voices heard.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Well, before I mentioned the teacher strike recently, that how I felt promoted the teacher unity. I want to say that I think that they waited very patiently for many years, being forty-eight and forty-nine, that they waited patiently and nothing happened. Sometimes something has to happen, has to be a catalyst to get something important going, and this certainly served as catalyst. I don't feel as the teachers that drove it out to nine days, I feel as the legislature. And I think there's, teaching is the creator of all other possessions, and we have to regard them with respect and the pay that they deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Rager.
In regards to the work, teacher work stoppage, unfortunately, it took our kids out of classrooms. Some kids had issues receiving meals, and that's the sad part of it. But the good that came from it is, it shows how much we as West Virginians outside of our legislature value education. And for the fact that the vast majority of our citizens supported our teachers and our service personnel in what they were trying to do. And it wasn't because it was their fault, it was truly because of our legislature and the lack of investment that was made into education throughout the state. And the other actual, actual good thing that I see that came out of it and why I think we support it, should support it, is we made a statement nationally to show how important education in West Virginia is. We're not that state that's at the butt of those jokes.
Thank you. I'm watching the clock. I think we're going to do maybe two more questions and then let you do your closing statements. Believe it or not, you've already answered ten questions. Or maybe it seems like twenty. One more little announcement. I gave you the early voting times. I hope everybody is aware that we have a new law in the state that you are going to have to show a form of identification at the polls. For most of us, that just means take your wallet, and you will have your driver's license or something else in there that qualifies. If you have any concern about whether you have something available to take with you, out on the table by the door are some cards that were made up in the Secretary of State's office. That is the lengthy list that West Virginia allows you to present as a form of identification. So if you have any question about that, you can pick one of these up on the way out and see which of those things you want to stick in your pocket when you go home. Let's see, this question we start with. Mr. Elkhart. Thirty-three percent of graduating seniors need remedial programs on entering college. What do you think are the root causes?
You did specify remedial programs. I think a lot of it is, there's one in math. I read in fourteen percent proficiency in high schools in the math arena. A lot of this, I don't think we have enough gateways along the way to make sure that we're not allowing students to progress too far without reaching certain academic hurdles. Math is certainly one of those, I hear that from college as well as high school teachers. And so I think you've got to make sure you put the proper resources and getting them focused in the right way so that you're getting the right development at the right age level. At one point, they were looking at girls at third grade and eighth grade, so that you don't, if you get them into high school, a lot of times it's too late to try to turn that around without a lot of intensity. And so I think the cause is we need to make sure that at the lower grade levels that you're addressing it early on and getting the attention they need regardless of what subject matter it might be, and make sure that you get them on the right path so that you don't give them coming out of college with insufficient skill set.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
I think that the students are probably need more in school, they seem to be a little less mature than probably what we were at that age. Maybe that's just because everybody seemed younger. But as far as responsibility, we need to instill to parents and the community that children need to be responsible for their own grades, for their own work, for their own homework, and that they need to apply themselves as, it seems like that there's a lot of other activities or TV programs or whatever, that we need to work with the community and parents in particular to set guidelines and help them understand what is important for the children to succeed in these areas, and to understand what is important for them to be able to succeed in college or to be college ready.
Thank you. Mr. Rager.
Thank you. When we look at how we approach this issue, because it is truly an issue for all of our students, no matter if they're college or career ready. When we have students in up to third grade, they're learning to read, but after that, they're reading to learn, and we need to ensure that we're providing them all of the resources from day one to ensure that they have the education as well as the fundamentals that they need to progress through elementary, middle, and high school. The other area that we have to work on is ensuring that we have engaged families within our school system. When families are engaged, students do better. We have higher graduation rates, we have higher rates of college acceptance as well as college graduation, graduation matters. And we have to ensure that our schools are welcoming and that we share the power between the family and the schools and have meaningful family-school partnerships.
Thank you. Ms. Bunnell.
Well, we do need to get our children involved in all their programs, their school programs, their homework and everything. When my grandchildren come over to our house, TVs go off, the homework comes out, and they get it done first. I tell them, that's the way your grandpa had to grow up, that's the way you'll do here. And they get their homework done, and I say, okay, now, you pick out the show you want to watch, you go go watch, sports, whatever, and that's it. But you've got to put an importance as to why they need to do it. Explain to them, this is what's going to get you where you want to go. Not that cartoon or that cowboy show, whatever. They're not going to win you your big awards, and they're not going to like, okay.
Ms. Johnson, I guess we're back to you. If you thought that earlier question was tough, I think you all might think this one is tougher. Somebody wants to make it hard for you. What is the school's role in supporting youth and families who are battling opioid addiction?
Wow. The school's role? Well, the school needs to be supportive. We have to understand that children, and as I said before about expectations, however, we have to realize children are going home to see drug abuse, to see things are going on at home they shouldn't be seeing. And what can we do to help? And this is all a problem leading to decreased graduation rates, not being college ready. We have to look at that, and we have to support. We have, through my own area and through my own school, I wrote grants, others that are here tonight have written grants. Those students had after-school programs with education and reading and math. We wrote grants that we had after-school programs in high school, math tutoring. Many teachers do tutoring, voluntarily do tutoring before and after school. We have to support those students, but yes, it's hard to get them ready to be where they need to be.
Thank you. Mr. Rager.
Through our court system, I'm involved with a lot of students, a lot of children as they're guarding at Lydon. And the vast majority of the students or the children that I'm guarding for is because their parents are abusing drugs. Our schools are on the front line of this. We need to ensure that our schools have the resources to provide what these children need, because oftentimes they're taken out of their home. And I commend Judy on being a foster parent, because in the state, we're out of foster homes. And it's a crisis that our schools are facing, because our kids are coming to school hungry because mom or dad's spending the money on drugs instead of food. And one of the other things that we need to look at for our system as a whole is ensuring that we're investing in prevention. Because we have to educate our current students on the value of living a drug-free life, and that is going to get them further than anything else when we build upon that foundation.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell.
My first man, I told you, I have approximately forty grandchildren. Wanted to mention to you, eleven of those grandchildren are adopted foster children. Two of them are less than a year old. Now, my daughters and sons have all taken it upon themselves to bring each other into their homes. And I tell them, when they first come into the house, call me grandpa. Call her grandma. And that's the way we treat them from day one. We try to teach them the value of loving home, and that's what they need to know. We also have to stress to them in our schools that to go home and deal with these things, it's going to be hard, but it's something that you've got to work on each and every day. And we've got to stand behind them to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Elkhart.
The school system is the front line for a lot of what kids are experiencing. Our nurses see it in our schools, our teachers, a lot of times can detect those types of things. The information flow of connectivity to the agencies that need to be involved is critical. We do see it. I mean, being in the classroom myself, you can only sense that something may be very wrong. I was at the budget meeting this past Saturday, and then Mr. Kenneth couldn't talk about the fact that we could use social services resources. We cut them out, I think, a few years ago, but one or two of those spoke to helping in this arena. The kids don't learn if they're not received, and understanding why they're not there, but getting at the heart of what's going on, as Mr. Rager said, in the household, what's happening in the home that's affecting their ability to learn and their ability to be at school in the first place. That's the technical school system frontline.
Thank you. I promise to, we finish about seven fifteen, and by the time we do our closing statements, after which I will let you applaud for them, it will be about that time. But I want to take one minute out. We had a lot of really good questions tonight, and I'm sorry we didn't get to all of them, but I kept hearing one word over and over and over, and the answer to that is teacher. And I'd like everybody in this room who either is a teacher or was at some time a teacher, whether in preschool, public school, homeschool, would you all stand up and look at us? Let us give you a hand. Thank you for what you do. We're going to have our candidates give us their closing statements now. Mr. Rager, you can take it first.
Investment is key, and that, I think, is the resounding answer that you're receiving to a lot of our issues tonight, is we need to invest in our community, we need to invest in our schools, we need to invest in our leadership. I ask you to imagine the system that you believe we should have when we began this evening. And why I'm here tonight is because I believe in every child, every family, every single person in our community. And education is the groundwork to ensure that we are providing the best way forward. I want to be the voice and advocate for every student, parent, and teacher in this morning. I want to work for an equitable education for all students. I want to focus on the classroom, and I want to be fiscally responsible. And that is why I'm asking for your vote as a member of the Wood County Board of Education. I'm a practicing attorney, so I bring a different set of skills to the boardroom, as well as my history throughout different boards and different organizations that I'm involved with. So with that, I ask for your vote on today.
Thank you. Mr. Bunnell.
Well, I believe it does have it correct, it does say investment, and that area is important. Our investment has got to be in our school system, it's got to be in our teachers as well as in our students. We have to take the time to go out, talk to our teachers, get related with our teachers, get related with our students, learn what's going on in our schools, and take care of the matter in whatever way we can. Now, we have to, we need to send out ways of learning, talk, questionnaires, whatever we have to do, get something from the schools. But get things to where we will have a closer relationship to all the schools, not just that we run. not just a pre-runder, not just the high schools. Okay? Something where we'll have a closer relationship to all the schools and all the teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Alcott.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and that you could have been somewhere else. And again, to believe women voters or make this a possible for us, but our school system is facing some pretty significant challenges. With the new superintendent needing to be selected and sixty percent of the board out for reelection. We've got a lot of work to do. I believe I bring to the table having been in the roles, President of West Virginia School Association, training all two hundred and seventy-five board members, but also previously, like the three times, I understand managing projects. We have some of those in front of us, including the vocational technical arena. And I believe I can help in that arena, also comes strongly about nurturing the differences of the other five, four board members. And you can develop a cohesive team and maintain trust in the central office staff, but in the community, we've got next level approaching this and remember, the community needs to feel confident that they've got people who are managing the system that are fiscally responsible and looking out for the long-term viability in the school system with the students in mind and at the forefront of everything we do. I appreciate your vote on people twenty-fifth forward.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
I have a thought with the mind, that working together, achieving together and succeeding together. Because each school community has its own culture, we have to work together to achieve and succeed. We have to share our strengths, work on our weaknesses. The workings of the school board and the administration must be accountable and transparent to the community because you are a great allies. We all want the same for our children and that is to be successful. To do this, we have to have the highest qualified people in those positions. I know the standards that are there for school improvement and I know the policies and we have to work on these together. And most of all though, I want you to know that I will listen to you as a community and school staff to build a better system for Wood County schools. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all for coming and telling us how you feel about these issues. Now I would like to give them a hand. I think we're finished and if you all can mingle a little, have a little chat in the lobby or if there are people who want to stay around and talk to you individually, feel free to do that.